Good evening and welcome to the May 27, 2020, 2025 Tuolumne City Council Meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting into order. Next thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Gonzalez tonight. That brings us to announcements, and our first announcement tonight is a proclamation declaring June 2020, 2025. I have a tough time with 2020 for five tonight. I don't know why. It's Pride Month in the city of Tuolumne, and this will be read by Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. Before I read the proclamation, I did just want to make a quick announcement that we actually had some conversation about this on social media over the weekend. Folks were asking about Pride Stride because June is coming up. And so the Pride Stride Committee has partnered with the city of Tuolumne to bring the city of Tuolumne and beyond a pride concert on August 8. And we have two wonderful presenters, performers. We are, the first concert starts at 5:00 PM, the second concert starts at 6:30, so look for some additional information coming out about our pride concert. All right, I am going to read the pride proclamation. Whereas the city council's 2030 vision is for Tuolumne to be an inclusive community that promotes equity, diversity, and access in creating a meaningful quality of life for everyone, which includes diversity of sexual orientation and identity. And whereas we recognize, support, and appreciate the invaluable contributions of the members of the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas Pride Month is currently celebrated each year in the month of June to honor the 1969 Stonewall uprising in Manhattan. And whereas many LGBTQIA+ community members continue to face harassment and physical violence and are four times more likely to experience violent victimization than non-community members. And whereas LGBTQIA+ youth are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to their straight cisgender youth. And each episode of the LGBTQIA+ victimization, such as physical or verbal harassment or abuse, increases the likelihood of self-harming behavior by 2.5 times on average. And whereas we remain steadfast in our dedication to eliminate the prejudice and discrimination faced by members of the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas we believe that the rich diversity of communities in Tuolumne is one of our greatest strengths. And we seek to amplify the voices of the LGBTQIA+ community, including youth, allies, and student groups such as Tuolumne High School's Gay-Straight Alliance and Hazelbrook Middle School's Aqua Club. Now therefore be proclaimed by the city council of the city of Tuolumne, Oregon, that Tuolumne recognizes June 2025 as Pride Month. The community is encouraged to respect and honor our diverse community, celebrate and build a culture of inclusivity and acceptance, and we invite you to participate in our summer concert celebrating pride on August 8, introduced and adopted this 27th day of May 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sacco. Announcement number two is a proclamation declaring June 2025, finally, as Gun Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tuolumne. We have the Wear Orange folks here today. I'd like to invite up to the podium. Come on up, Mary Pat.
You can join up there. You don't have to be shy.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Bubinek, Council President Pratt, and council members. My name is Mary Pat Hensel from nearby Wilsonville, standing in for Tuolumne residents who cannot be here this evening with travel. Like them, I am a mother, grandmother, wife, sister, aunt, and volunteer. As the outreach lead for South Metro Portland Moms Demand Action Local Group, we say thanks. I am joined here by other volunteers and passion-filled friends. By having me speak with you again this year, as you proclaim support for National Gun Violence Awareness Day on June 6 and Wear Orange Weekend from June 6 to 8, we show the power of working together to amplify the message of awareness about gun violence for those who have perished and for survivors. We are in this together, and this is the beginning. If each of us can keep one person more secure, the proclamation is worth your investment. My job as a volunteer for Wear Orange since 2017 is to be out there and to get you the tools you need to amplify a clear and unified message. Clad in orange, I know you can see me here in the council chambers, on the street, and even if I was in the woods. I work for our Oregon communities, and I will be as gentle or as loud as I need to be. As a survivor of gun violence, I want my message to be one of care and support. I have lived experience that I do not want others to have to have. My family shares this lived experience of my brother Mark taking his life with a gun. This action reshaped my life and created a familial ripple effect, so first and foremost, stay alert. Some Oregon data to illustrate and share my passion. Seventy-seven percent of annual firearm deaths in Oregon are by suicide as compared by, as compared to 54% nationwide. This is from 2024data@everystat.org, and I will leave that with the recorder. We must do better. Earlier this month, I shared this info with the Wilsonville mayor and council. I explained that wearing orange to call awareness to gun violence works well for me because I feel emboldened when I'm suited up. You may feel the same way when you wear orange on June 6 and into the first weekend of June. We will be in your midst at tabling events this summer and available for Tuolumne events, and we are, see me if, and we are here. See me if anyone wants more information about our programs like Be Smart or One Thing You Can Do, connections with people across the area, or Wear Orange social media tips. Again, I am personally grateful for your help.
Thank you, Mary Pat. Counselor Reyes.
Thank you for your story. That was really inspiring. Very proud to read this proclamation. As a victim of gun violence myself, when I was 17 years old, in the streets of Los Angeles, I was gunshot, gunshot wounded through on my arm, my stomach. Some of you might see some of my scars. That is part of that, and it was, it was really a true gun violence scenario when, when I was shot. So I'm just, after being a coma for 38 days and a doctor that really worked really hard for me to survive, I'm, I sit here and tell my story. So now I'm 48 years old, so now you know that 31 years later, I've survived that, and I am, I just advocate for those individuals that, that have, just, just, I, I don't, do not condemn the Second Amendment, but I do want people to be aware and be conscious of what you have. Talk to your children, talk to the community, practice safety, and, and just be safe out there. And children can really get their hands into these kinds of weapons that are very dangerous. And I think that if you can practice that and be aware of who you have in your home, that it will reduce some of the violence that is out there. Thank you. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun, gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are more than 18,000 gun homicide, homicides every year. And whereas Oregon has an average of 587 gun deaths every year, Oregon has the 37, 34th highest rate of gun death in the U.S. And whereas cities across the nations are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizen goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence in hotlines, and an increase city, and, and increase in city gun violence. Whereas in January 2013, Hadiah Pelinton was tragically shot and killed at the age of 15. And in June, and in June, to recognize Hadiah Pelinton's birthday, born June 2, 1997, people across the United States recognize gun violence awareness and wear orange in tribute to Hadiah Pelinton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiah's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas by wearing orange in June, Tuolumne will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore be, be proclaimed by the city of, of the city of Tuolumne, by the council, city council of the city of Tuolumne, Oregon, that June 2024, June 2025 is Gun Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tuolumne. The community is encouraged to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives, introduced and adopted this 27th day of May 2025. Got to correct the, got to correct them.
Yeah, got to correct. We had the proclamation, but it has to be corrected. We can do the photo. You can do the photo. Do the photo.
If you want to come around the table with the proclamation. If you guys want to come up. I'm going to just kind of cluster it.
Let's have a super zoom. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to public comment. Public comment, it's an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the room here who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. I don't have anyone signed up, but you don't have to be signed up. Does anyone like to, does, is there anyone here who would like to address the council? Is there anyone in Zoom?
There are people, but not.
It's your opportunity, if you're in Zoom, to raise your hand and address the council. All right, then I'll move on. That brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are those items considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless someone on council would like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight. There is only one item on our consent agenda tonight. Item number one, consideration of approval of the regular meeting minutes of May 12, 2025. Would any council like that item removed from consent and heard separately later tonight?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on those motions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. That brings us to council communications. During the work session, we did not get to an item during the work session, so we'll circle back on the climate action plan implementation funding topic. Sherilyn, you coming up here, staying there? How do you want to handle it?
I stay here.
Sure. I think the cameras move around.
Yes, they do. We do have a slide deck that, with the answers to some of the questions that you, that you raised at the last council meeting. So if you could advance, thank you Bates. So this is from the last presentation where this was in the report that the Echo Northwest presented this information about how our rates compare for electric, natural gas, telecommunications, and solid waste. And then if you raised the fee on the electric utility, the natural gas utility, the communications utility, or the solid waste utility, and then there were a variety of options, one half of 1%, 1%, and 1.5%. The next slide is also from the last presentation, and this was looking at a 5% surcharge on our building permit fees and how much that raised, and that showed the 2025 budget and then added the 5% surcharge. And then the next slide shows the Share the Pennies program, which we discussed would be an opt-out program much like Memphis, Tennessee. And there were two options, a 49 cent and a 99 cent. So the questions that were raised, a couple of them, so the next slide, oh, the, as a reminder, the cost of implementation would be a, a, a program coordinator position out of my office. And so the sooner that, that person starts, the sooner, the, the quicker you don't have to listen to me at making these kind of presentations and, and missing some things. And that, that person will be a huge value add in this work. And then some implementation program expenses for consultants and action implementation to be determined. All right. So the follow-up question. So one of the questions was if the electric utility franchise fee was increased by a half a percent or a third of a percent, what would that increase look like on an average residential bill? So we were not able to get that information from PGE about the average residential bill. So we looked at two different household bills. These are actual bills. The one on the left is a single-family detached home with a household of three, and it has natural gas as well. And so the, the energy charges for the month that we're looking at, which was in May, in April, is $140, $184.91. So if you increased that, the franchise fee by a half of percent, that would be 92 cents a month on that, on that household bill. A third of a percent increase would be 55 cents per month on that bill. The bill on the right is an attached condominium with a household of one without natural gas, so it's all electric. So presumably, this bill would be higher than, than the one with natural gas. And again, the energy charges are $114.84, and so a half a percent increase would be 57 cents a month, and a third percent increase would be 34 cents a month. If you look at the next one, so we looked at Northwest Natural and Republic. So Northwest Natural, if you raised the natural gas fee, which is a little more complicated because that they pay a right-of-way fee, we do not have a franchise with Northwest Natural, so it would, it would take some renegotiation and creating a franchise with Northwest Natural. But if you increased the, the fee that we charge them by a half a percent or a third of a percent, the average residential bill in Tuolumne is approximately $100 a month, although that varies fairly widely by month and electricity usage. So not everybody has a natural, natural gas, so there's some variability there. But a half a percent increase on the, on the bill would be 50 cents a month, and a third of a percent increase would be 30 cents a month. We looked at the solid waste fee as well. So the chart you see there is from our fee schedule, and it's the rates as of January 2024. If you'll remember, the rates were not increased in 2025, so those are the rates that were under. Residential customers have three options, a 20-gallon cart, a 35-gallon cart, and a 65-gallon cart. And you can see the, the costs as of January 1. And so the 35-gallon cart, I believe, is the most common here in Tuolumne, and so a half a percent increase would be 16 cents a month, and a third of a percent increase would be 10 cents a month. I think there's a couple of other slides. So the next slide, oh yeah, how volatile are our building permit fees? So we went back and looked from 2021 all the way through the, we have, the most comparable numbers are through 2024. And I'll tell you why, but so in 2023, there was an increase in the residential, I mean in the building permit fees. So that's why it went up fairly dramatically because of the, the increase that you approved that year. The 2024 actuals were a little smaller, and then, so the 2025 actuals, that is not a full year, but that, there is, we've gotten some fairly big ones in, in that year, so, in this year so far. Our budget for 2025 is 1.3 million, and we've already received just a little over 2 million. So I, we look at these numbers and say there's not a lot of volatility. They don't dramatically go up or down. So I would say they're not, not volatile. The next slide, oh, so the question was how did, how does Tuolumne compare to other cities in building fees? And in 2023, when we were looking at the building permit in, the fee increase, we did some comparison, and this is from that slide deck in May of 2023. So new commercial permit fees, this is before you approved it, we were the lowest of any one we had, we saw, and that's, it's for a new building. It's not a, like a alteration or tenant improvements. And so the increase still left us below everybody else that we looked at. The next slide shows a new single-family residence, so building a new house. Again, before you raised the fee, we were the lowest, and then when you raised the, the fee, we're still below market compared to many others. The next slide, oh, so Aquila and her team put together some examples. So we took commercial alterations and residential alterations and had a few examples here. So from May of '24 to May of '25, there have been a total of 113 commercial alteration permits totaling $400,000. So the average permit fee is about $3,500. If you add 5% surcharge to that, you would have the average permit fee of $3674. So a few of the examples, so Sherwin-Williams did a change of occupancy. This was the lowest of all the 113, was, the 265 was the lowest amount of any of those. The highest of the 113 permits was $34,000 for Anodized Solutions, and that was a tenant improvement remodel. And then Fred Meyer did a restroom refresh, and that was kind of the median of the fees paid, and that was $1,470. So those are just some examples of alterations at the commercial level. At the residential level, so for an alteration, and examples are a wall and window modification, converting a garage into living space, adding a balcony. So we've had 37 of those. The average fee is $780. So you can see there that if you added a 5% surcharge, it would be 815 for the average permit fee, but you know, that goes from 230 to 2280. So the median is more in the $500 range, so. I think that is the, the last slide, and hopefully addresses the questions that you ask and the questions that you have.
Questions for Sherilyn? Comments, thoughts, proposals? Counselor Gonzalez?
So I do have some, maybe some, I need some questions answered regarding how to pay for this position. And so I am in support of the, you know, rounding up the utilities, that, I'm in support of that, but I would like to ask, in looking, in reviewing our budget, I found there was some, some money that potentially could be, could be thrown at this position as a starting point and then backfilling it with the roundup situation. So maybe you can answer, we have 4.95 million in contingency money. We have 1.58 million in general fund reserves, and then we have ARPA money, 2.2 million in ARPA money remaining, and we've only allocated a small portion of the ARPA money. So can you talk about what those revenues are for, and can we use those revenues for maybe two years to get this position going, to allow us to build reserves on the roundup revenue for this position versus increasing utility costs to all of our constituents?
We are lucky to have our Assistant City Manager slash Finance Director here tonight, and I believe you would be able to answer that question.
Yeah, so let me, let me start with the ARPA funds, because I, no, I'll need to probably double back and have you repeat the other parts. The ARPA funds that we have set aside are for the Las Casitas Park renovation, as well as the path adjacent to Plumbet Gardens. We are, don't know the exact dollar amount that's going to be remaining after those projects. So the 2.2 that you're seeing, some of that's, most of that's already tied up in those projects. They just haven't been spent yet. Another thing that's been looked at is the sidewalk program that Public Works will be back in front of you.
I think the first meeting of June.
To talk about the sidewalk program, and the talk has been utilizing some of the remaining funds for that. Those are also one-time monies, so throwing one-time monies at an ongoing position is not sustainable. So I would not recommend utilizing that funding source because we have other ARPA-type of projects that are waiting in the wings once we have the full dollars of Las Casitas and the Plumbet Gardens.
Let me just, so thank you for that. I, I'm in agreement with you that it wouldn't be sustainable to throw those one-time dollars. My suggestion was that we would use those dollars to try to build reserves and backfill it with the roundup that we're recommending. So if there is support for the Climate Action Plan and, and people are opting in to do the roundup, we would fund the position with some of these general funds. We have 5.5 million of unappropriated funds that we can throw 300,000 to hire this person for two years at 600,000, and then we can backfill to build reserves on the utility roundup versus having to increase the utility costs, permitting costs, and all the various taxes that are going to be bleeding into our system. So I understand the ARPA funds, I understand the 1.58 million that you have in the general fund reserves for other, pre-allocated, but what about the 5.5 million that's not unappropriated yet?
So those are for future uses. So the, our unappropriated category, what we have in the budget that you'll be looking at again tomorrow night, unappropriate can only be used in free, for future years. That cannot be allocated or cannot, during the year, we cannot get to those. So we have reserves and we have contingencies that we have the ability to program into the budget. Those are also for one-time uses. We utilize that for capital projects that we have in the need in the future. Continency is for things that come up during the year. So all those sources are one-time dollars that get wrapped into that. If the, utilizing one-time dollars for ongoing revenues on an ongoing basis, this is not sustainable, the council could direct something on a short-term basis, but that would be up to the.
Yeah. I guess my goal is that if we were investing in this position, and if there is opt-in people, we would build money on its own. It would be self-sustaining, per se. The other question I have for you is there's a funds transfer from the utilities, the hidden dependency of, there is 1.3 million, 1.34 million dollars transferred to Stormwater Fund, and then there's 1 million dollars transferred to, from sewer funds, okay? Can you talk about those funds? Are we, are, are we, are those funds structurally supported by the general fund?
So you talked about the transfers in from those, those funds.
I showed on the budget when I was going through our budget, that binder, that, that we had a 1.34 million dollars transferred. Are we, are we, are those funds structurally supported by the general fund?
So you talked about the transfers in from those, those funds?
I showed on the budget when I was going through our budget, that binder, that that we had a 1.34 million dollars transferred from Stormwater Funds. We have 1 million dollars transferred from sewer funds. So are those two transfers being supported by the general fund?
Those are for expenditures that are paid for out of the general fund. It's by department's time, it's admin's time, it's, you know, all the different internal services. So it's all the supporting functions for those funds that are funded out of the general fund, and those, those funds backfill to pay for their share.
So we're like, we're floating the money, and is that what it is?
No, it's all the expenditures, so my, just to take my time. I am 100% funded out of the general fund. I do, I do budgeting, I do other things for the sewer fund, for the Stormwater Fund, and for all the different funds. So there's an allocation of my time spread out amongst all the different funds to, so the general fund is not paying for my time that is being used on other programs and other funds. So it's not floating, it's actually just basically, in essence, reimbursing for the time that is paid for out of the general fund.
Sure. So I'll close with this, but so I understand the ARPA funds, I understand the general funds, and that those are already planned. So on the 5 million dollars that we have in contingencies, those technically could be used to fund this position for two years while we backfill the budget based on the roundup. We potentially could do that, is that, would that be correct?
They are one-time dollars that could be allocated by the council, though again.
Towards that.
Based upon our long-term policy and procedure of the council is to utilize one-time funds for one time.
Sure. And those funds, the general funds, year over year, money, for lack of a better word, gets dribbled into that fund, correct? So year over year, so let's just say, for example, we decided to pull 600,000 to fund this position for two years. And then, of course, this year comes, next year comes, money gets put back into the general fund. And by that time, the roundup utility bill is building its own momentum, it's building its own backfill budget. We technically could do that potentially without having to increase our fee structure throughout our system and just fund in that way while people opt in to round up those dollars on the utility bill to build the reserves for that position, if there's enough support for it.
Technically, yes, it can.
Okay, thanks. I'll have more questions later around the budget. It took me a while to extrapolate this information from all the various numbers, but I did see other opportunities where we potentially could use other funds. And I'll, I'll have questions for you that I'll, I'll email you, and we can probably discuss it further.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council President Pratt?
Yeah, I appreciate that suggestion, but when I look at the numbers, if we got 75,000, that's estimated a year, that after three years, we have 225,000, so that's not even going to fund one additional year. So I don't see that as a long-term solution. I'm back to the mayor's suggestion from last, the issue is, if you, if you look at these different options of the roundup to 75,000, the building permits will go to an estimate of 67,000. So we still, that's 142,000, so we still have to, we have to tap into one of these fees. So where I'm at is like the mayor suggested of using a three-level of doing the building permit and the roundup, which is great, because that's an opt-out. And then just if we use what Council Hillier suggested, thus that 3 cents, and it looks like, I mean, it's money, and I feel bad, but it's 54 cents or 30 cents, it looks, you know, we're talking a fairly small amount here.
Bates, can you put it back up? I'm sorry.
As tough as it is, but that would get us over 290,000. So if we really kept it at 250 for the first year, we are building a little on this. So that's my suggestion.
So let me just make sure that I'm clear. Can you go back, back, back? Sorry, thank you. So the 5% building, the surcharge, which is 70,000.
67, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Your mic.
Oh, sorry, then the round, the 99 cent roundup.
The 99 cent roundup, so can you go back to?
75,000, so we're almost only just got over 100,000 to make up for it, so we can minimize what we're charging people.
Okay, all right, all right. The roundup at 99 cents, mm-hmm, okay.
Council Brooks?
I would support that, and I would also say that, that when I look at the electric, it would be equitable because businesses contribute as well. And so it's not just about offsetting personal CO2. And we know that the business sector has a big off-gassing issue around here. So I, I do like taking it out of the hands of just the residents, which the opt-out program alone would be very unfair to our residents and would be very inequitable, especially to our residents that could afford the least. So I'm, I would support any plan that, that use the three solutions for the money that we need. However you guys want to do it. I don't think that the market rate for any project that's being planned for building fees, that this would put anybody out of market rate, and that's what they look at when they're planning their budgets. And then finally, the largest amount that we saw was under a dollar for the most energy use. So that's for a family. And I think that that's reasonable, and we're going to be a more efficient and effective city, and we're going to save money for our community by implementing these programs while.
Other comments, questions? Council Hillier?
Thank you. I just am a really strong believer in braided funding, and I think the recommendation, I, I understand trying to, to build funds, but I really believe that where we are right now is really unprecedented economic times, and I really am concerned to just try to put it into a one-time use thing and hope to collect the funds. I just, I just, I don't think that that is a good business practice for us, and, and it hasn't been in years past. And I'm, I don't know, I, I understand the spirit of it, and I really am not interested in raising rates. However, the community has told us this is what they want. And so I believe that it is now our job to find a way to make it happen. And I really like what I've heard from Council President Pratt, and at the 3%, certainly I would, I'd be, I would move forward with that.
Not 3, 0.3%, not 3%.
0.3.
Yeah.
0.3.
Yeah.
0.3, we're done.
Okay.
Council Sacco?
Just to clarify, Council President Pratt, are you suggesting the 0.3% across all four service types or just electricity?
Just electric.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that I was on the same page. And yeah, I, I agree with everything Councilor Hillier just mentioned. And I think that the approach that Council President Pratt brought up is sustainable. It keeps costs low for our residents. There's also, you know, a tie-in to the building permit fees that impact climate change. And so I think that there's that nexus there. And then also the opt-in, I think, is a great way for folks that want to support additionally can support. And so I think that it's, I think that's a great solution. Thank you for bringing that up.
Didn't you have your hand up? No, I thought you had your hand up for that question. No, I'm talking to Council Brooks, okay, so.
No.
Okay, Councilor Gonzalez.
So I just wanted to also add that, you know, with the rising cost everywhere, and the school bond that just passed is going to cost taxpayers, our constituents, you know, an average of about 500 to 600, okay? And so though we're only adding cents here and cents there, but when you look at our property taxes, and you look in all the, the reoccurring non-sunsetting taxes, this just adds to our tax. So I just, I understand that it's going to pass based, well, on what I'm hearing. But I just want to go, I just want to acknowledge that, that our constituents right now, with this added expense with the bond and some of these other expenses that we're still paying for, and now to increase everybody's cost only because our costs are lower than all of the cities, that shouldn't be a reason why. It is, Tuolton is affordable in our utility, but we're very expensive on our, our homes. I think there's probably a way on the general fund that we could fund this position while it backfills itself with the roundup sense. I just wanted to go on the record on that, so thank you.
So, question I have is, you know, we're, we're just looking at the electric bill. But I know the natural gas, you know, if we did 0.3, it gets us, what, 40 something thousand? But natural gas, I know Northwest Natural's not going to like this, but natural gas and the, the emissions from natural gas are a contributor to, to, you know, to warming. And so natural gas, the electric users who are being more efficient and all, you know, are going to pay all the surcharge, whereas natural gas, there's, there's no surcharge, you know, no additional surcharge there. But then knowing that staff would have to do a whole franchise agreement, you know, what's the net of that after all that time? To get 30 something thousand dollars and then all the rigmarole we'd have to go through in a franchise agreement with Northwest Natural Gas. It kind of irritates me in a way, but it's, I'm not going to do a 0.3% increase on that just to make the statement that that's a zero after staff time and all that rigmarole. Council Brooks? But somehow I think they should be part of the equation.
I, I agree with you very much. And I do think that from this solution, I really agree with Council President Pratt as well. However, I do believe that it might be something that we could have the city look into so that when we look at a year review, that we would be prepared. And, and there'd be more space in the, in the staff to be able to do that work. Because I don't, yeah. We need, we need an extra person in Sherilyn's office.
So I'm gonna go to the.
To do this work, yeah.
So Council President Pratt's suggestion, yours is the 5% building fee, roundup at 99 cents, and then a 0.3% only on electric. And that will get us to how much?
291.
Well, and there's variability in the building rate, so it would, it gets us 250 to 300.
Okay. Can you repeat exactly, what is it, so 5% for building fees and what else?
The 99% roundup and 0.3% on electric only.
You keep forgetting your mic.
I'm sorry.
Keep it on, because if you're going to be making a motion.
Well, I'd like to make a motion for my proposal.
Wait, more questions?
I'm writing it down.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Because I can, I can, I didn't hear you.
Okay.
So building fees, 3%?
The 5.
Building fees is 5%.
5%.
That still keeps us.
Electric was 3%?
0.3.
0.3.
Oh, 0.3, okay. And then the roundup, all pennies, 99 cents. With the opt-out.
And you're going with the assumption on the roundup of the lower participation?
No.
Or the higher?
The higher.
The higher.
I think people will definitely.
What happens, because I, I'm going to be the pessimist, what if you're going to get 50% participation rate?
Well, we've got about, we've got, we're saying 291,000, so even if I'm, if you're a little pessimistic, we should get at least 250.
And that's the bare bones and the mask that you need.
Yeah, but we're going to look at this in a year.
Yeah.
And we can.
I remember saying that to you last time. I just want to make sure that you, you know, because I'd rather go to more pessimistic number than, yeah.
Yeah, you always budget.
Well, what was the pessimistic I did just grab?
75,000.
But I, I.
That's what I used.
You used, you used the 75, okay.
Okay, yeah. I, I like the idea that, I'm not so, so much of a big fan of electric. But, I mean, I'll still, I'll support it because it looks like the most doable thing. I do want to also see it in about a year review, what we can do. Maybe the pennies would actually be more effective, and people are willing to pay another dollar for, for that. So I'm not, I definitely would like to see it in a year. Yeah, so not, I'm not, like I say, I'm, I'm okay with it, if that's, that's what everybody decides.
We do not need a motion.
Sorry, grants, don't forget.
Oh, yeah, 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 grants are.
I definitely want to encourage grants, because that would be what Councilor Gonzalez was saying about a big lump of chunk of money at once, and then we build on that reserve, so.
Yeah, a grant won't, won't pay for a body, though. A grant will pay for actual projects and, yeah.
But it relieves.
Absolutely.
Relieves costs to use for something else.
Council Brooke?
I appreciate your concerns, Mayor. And I think too, we had that previous conversation that if we needed consulting fees, that we could look at keeping the door open for that in our budget. So I don't know if that's to be included on a motion or what we're doing.
Yeah, so since it's a work session item, we just need direction.
Oh, direction, okay, great. So that, that would be included in the direction for me to shore up that concern.
So the direction, do I have majority of the council with a direction of a 5% surcharge on building fees, the roundup or pennies at 99 cents, and a 0.3% increase on electric only? Is that what the majority would like?
Thank you for your direction, and I look forward to making it happen.
Bring us back to here. Okay, other council communications. Council President Pratt?
I just have one, and I've been, I'm sure most of you have been following the Clean Water Service Insurance. I don't know what it's called specifically, but I, I've had a real concern about the lack of transparency in this whole process. And it, and I've talked to people that have been involved or adjacently involved. And, you know, I found out that some of the reason they're not being transparent is employees walked off with records that they don't have copies of, so I get that. But the fact is, is that the city of Tuolton bills the water, they're, they've now separated out the Clean Water Services section, but it's, it's nearly impossible to sep, you know, we don't want to send two bills to people and complicate matters. But I would like to ask for a resolution because of this lack of transparency that Clean Water Services brings a presentation annually to us, and that if they are going to have any rate increases, they have to present that to us just so we can ask questions and make, you know, and maybe push a little for this transparency that I feel like our city tries to have for our community.
So I would, I would amend that ask or add on to that ask that I would like to look at, have them bill direct, getting us, getting us out of it.
Well, that would be better.
Because they are doing it in other cities. And that, that city does not have to bill for it, or those cities that are billing for Clean Water Services are actually getting paid to do it, which we are not getting.
Oh, definitely.
I'd like to get into the billing discussion too, if they ever come, so. So folks, okay with that ask? So are you, you going to work with Sherilyn on a draft or?
So we, I come back with a draft, a resolution, I can work with you on a draft, on that draft, and that we come back the next council meeting. Okay, thank you.
Other council communications. Council Reyes?
Yeah, I missed to say this earlier at our council communication, but there is a blood drive coming up in just, just thinking of gun violence and how much blood is needed for some of these surgeries that are happening when a victim comes in. So it's really important that we donate blood if we can. And there will be a blood drive on June 10th with bloodworksnorthwest.org. So if you want to sign up, go to bloodworksNW for northwest.org. June 10th will be our next blood drive, and I think the city's hosting it, but I can't remember where they're hosting it. But if you.
It's at the police.
It's a police department, okay, great. So please, please, sign up if you can. If you have all negative blood, it's universal, please donate, we need it. And so thank you all for, if you're a donor, thank you. That's all I got to say.
So we did have time for you, for your, your roundtable discussion, you have anything you'd like to add at this time? So, we did have time for you, for your, your roundtable discussion, you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
Sure. So, our team attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Interconnections Workshop. So, to look at our various interconnections that we have with Lake Oswego, Wilsonville, Sherwood. So, that is on our work plan to, again, identifying what it would take to, to make sure that those connections are, are solid and in an emergency, that we're as resilient as we can be. So, that, that was a, we took our entire water team to that. We are immersed in library discussions about funding and governance, and that will continue. They, the county delayed their presentation to the Board of County Commissioners, and so Jerry Ann was going to be here tonight to give you an update on it, but that's a little bit in flux, because the board is apparently not of one mind on this, and so it's causing some disruption down the supply chain, if you will. However, they just completed their second round of polling for the levy that will be on the November ballot, and those numbers, they, they did the polling with the public safety levy, and the, the numbers came back very solid. So, we're very encouraged and hopeful about that. We were awarded a grant of sorts, although there's no money associated with it, for a recruitment and retention audit for the police department out of the University of Virginia, UVI. And, these experts in public safety in particular, of cutting-edge recruitment tools, and, so they'll look at our organization and then they'll, they'll give us some insights into, into ways to recruit and retain, hopefully. Last Tuesday, Hazelbrook did their day of service, and so over six hundred kids participated. And just huge shout-out to Jackie Conan and our entire Parks Team, our exec team participated in it. Lamb did their day of service as a part of it, but having six hundred middle schoolers throughout our system was no small task. And, they were great, so it was really cool to see them out there pruning and planting garden and picking up trash and just doing all kinds of stuff. As a part of Public Works Week last week, last Wednesday, we did our first Big Truck Day in Community Park. And thirty minutes before it started, the parking lot was packed and we were having to turn away people. And it was just packed, and the smiles and the pictures were just amazing, and it was really cool. Summer reading kicks off this week, so, or Saturday, at two PM, we have a carnival going on at the library, and so start of summer reading kickoff. Speaking of summer, the splash pad is open for the summer, so that's exciting. Through June first, we have a, the, I think it's the entire state, but it may be just the county, has a click-it-or-ticket program right now, seatbelt enforcement, so watch out, make sure you're wearing your seatbelt. Blender Dash is June seventh, so that's before our next council meeting, and that's always such a, a fun, exciting, vibrant time that is kind of a kickoff to summer. And my last thing was the blood drive with Blood Works Northwest, so, thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I have is with Memorial Day yesterday, I wanna let folks know that Tuolton Historical Society is trying to collect stories from veterans who live in Tuolton. So, if you are a family member or know of veterans, you can go to veterans.tualtonhistory.org to get your oral story into their databases of Tuolton's veterans. I know Ross Baker's coming next time, Historical Society update, and I'll ask him again about this. But they've got a whole bunch of, a big outreach, I had a bunch of these, you won't see it on the camera, out yesterday for veterans who were not aware of it and do wanna get their stories in a database. So, again, veterans.tualtonhistory.org, if you are a veteran or you have a veteran in your family, please get their story into their databases so that that person can be remembered at the Historical Society. Anything else? Council Hillier?
Thank you. I was excited to hear that several of you were able to make it to the Wynona Grange Gathering Market, and I wanted to say that the Grange is now gonna host it twice a month, the vendors, and anyway, we're really wanting to be able to be in our community more often, cause they love to be here. So, please check the website at winonagrange271.org. And the next one will be June eighth, then June twenty-second, so, and then continue. It's from ten to two at the Grange, which is on the commons. Thank you.
Anything else? Council Brooks?
I just want to remind people too, that the chamber's hosting the Key Leaders Breakfast, which I think our esteemed mayor is part of the presenters along with a couple of economists looking at the economic forecast. So, come join us really early in the morning, at seven AM, is it Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday. And I think that's all I've got, thanks. Oh, you can get a log for your read, for the reading kickoff for your books for the summer, so if you want to get a reading log, go to the library for that.
Anything else? So, I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So move.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn the Tuolton City Council meeting. Do I have any discussions or motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, all right. That means we'll now spin our hats around and we'll go ahead and start the Tuolton Development Commission meeting. So, I'll go ahead and call to order for the Tuolton Development Commission. Yeah, Council Reyes, thanks, she thought she was going home. Nope. Nope. All right, so, yes, so the Tuolton Development Commission of May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five is now called to order. First and minor, first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items that are considered routine. It'll be voted and passed in one motion unless someone would like to remove from consent. Do I have anyone who would like to remove the item number one, consideration of approval of the Tuolton Development Commission meeting minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, removed from consent?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussions or motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, all right. Don't we usually have public comment for commission? Sound the agenda. All right. I'll open the floor for public comment on something that is not on the commission's agenda tonight. Anybody in the room who would like to speak to an item that, or, that is not on the, blah, blah, blah. They would like to address the commission on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Anyone in Zoom? All right. Now, we'll get to general business. Thank you for, you guys for being very patient. We have item number one, the downtown revitalization project led by Sid. Welcome Sid.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Bubinik and members of the commission. I'm Sidson Urban Renewal Economic Development Manager, and this evening, I'm happy to have Michelle Reeves-Civilis Consulting. Michelle is helping us in our downtown revitalization process, specifically focusing on community identity, place-making that first five months of this, this process, so extremely excited to have her here. And a great opportunity for, for you to meet her and for, for her to meet you as well. But before we kicked into her presentation, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the updated schedule that was in your, included as an attachment, be in the staff reports. We had our first Community Advisory Committee meeting two weeks ago. And we got, I felt like we got some great feedback on how we can look at ways to engage the community a little bit more. And so, we, we went back, Michelle and I, and we looked at the schedule, and we thought, okay, how do we add in more in-person opportunities? And again, it's to, to kinda build those relationships with community council members, CAC members as well. And so, that schedule that you have in your packet reflects the additional dates. And in summary, what we've added was the, the walking tour downtown that we had yesterday. We have in-person and additional virtual meetings with the TDC. We, we added three of those meetings, including the one this evening. We have some downtown workshops focused on three different category, interest area. One was the teen and youth area. The other was renters and affordable housing. And then the last one was the focusing on the Latino community and getting input and feedback. Then lastly, there was, we also added another in-person meeting with the Community Advisory Committee, and that is scheduled for July second. So, with that, we're, we're open, we're, we're in the process of developing what those might look like, but certainly if there's any input at this meeting, or if you wanna send me an email, if you have some additional thoughts, how can we best reach those that are typically not, that typically don't participate? That's kind of what we're looking for. We're gonna look at, at our CAC members to give us some guidance on that. But again, certainly open to any suggestions or other opportunities. And that concludes my piece of it. If you have any questions, I'm available for questions. If not, we pass it over to, to Michelle.
Any questions for Sid? Well, welcome, Michelle, and thank you for being patient.
Thank you.
I think there might be a question.
Was there a question?
From Council Roberts?
Oh, Council Brooks?
I just, I had a question as far as the, the planning teams, if we're also including environmental, any environmental people?
For the Technical Advisory Committee or-
No, not for the technical, for the community group.
An environmental, we can add that to one of our definitely categories, maybe any suggestions on that?
I can think about it, we can, but anybody that has suggestions, we could do a-
Do you mean to serve in the CAC, or do you mean?
Yeah, we, yeah, we had discussed that.
Okay, I, was that part of, I thought it was part of the sustainability's person? That, that might be serving on our Technical Advisory Committee, no?
I think, I think there's, that is a separate staff.
Okay, but you're specifically on the CAC?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, is that, is that direction to us, that we add an environmental position on the CAC? I had understood that, we had understood that, that in that discussion, that it was the, on the Technical Advisory Committee, the, the new, the new person would be on the Technical Advisory Committee with that voice. That's how we understood that. Oh, I, I-
I guess I'm confused, because I understood it when we were discussing it, it was gonna be on the CAC and that we were gonna review the people going on the CAC at council level, but I'm, I'm not sure what the Technical Advisory Committee's role will be, so.
So, they, they, they would be there to support the CAC as kind of resident experts in the different fields that we have. We have internal staff from Planning, Engineering, Public Works, and our pending sustainability person that would kind of bring in the sustainability lens to the process.
And the fire department.
Right, yeah.
That's where we put the fire department folks.
I, I think that, I understood that there was gonna be community involvement too, because we've had a lot of community engagement and support on the Climate Action Plan, and so I think there's people that have been talked to, and we've done a lot of community conversations, so I don't, it would be hard to find that person. But I'd like the community to feel comfortable and involved.
Council Sacco?
I'm confused as to who this person would be. Is this, are you talking about a, like a community member that is just a climate action advocate? Or somebody, or a professional within the, the climate action industry? And I'm just asking that question, because I think we have a lot of advocates on the committee that are going to speak to climate. So, I'm just making sure that there's gonna be a value add. I mean, I'm sure whoever this person would add, they would add value, I'm not saying that they wouldn't. But, I'm also, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of climate action advocates within, you know, Council Pratt, myself, the mayor, other folks. I just, I didn't under, I didn't, I didn't know exactly what lens you were looking at up front.
Well, I think that somebody that has expertise would be actually good.
So, professional, and that is-
They don't have to be like an engineer, but there could be somebody from the River Keepers, there could be something, somebody from the, the school that teaches environmental studies, there's really active environmental teachers. You know, it could be a community and expertise-focused, doesn't have to be like somebody that's, you know, preventing floods or something like that. That might be hard to get.
Council Hillier?
And to further clarify, you, you're talking about on the technical advisory team, or you're talking about on the full team? I'm sorry.
From what I understood, the technical advisory team was mostly staff. So, it would be a public person, like just a, a community person that has expertise and involvement, especially since we're making big changes that are right by our river and, yeah.
And so, again, further clarify, sorry, follow-up, it's not, so the, when we move forward with finding a funding lever to have the climate person, is that person not gonna be on that technical advisory? Is that what I thought I heard? I, I guess I'm confused.
That's, I'm sorry, we didn't clarify it earlier, because I, I did not realize there was confusion about that. I, that's what I under, I had understood, was that the, that the new climate action implementation person would sit on the Technical Advisory Committee and that that would fill that, that role that you had asked for.
I just think that should be an integrated part of the city's Technical Advisory Committee, because that person's gonna be doing a lot of integration within all the departments. But I also think that there are people that are invested and specifically focused and have a lot more, you know, like expertise than any one of us up here in that, in those kind of fields, and that we've talked to a lot of people through our outreach, so I just don't think it would be hard. But that's what we asked for in the beginning, and I, I thought was part of the plan. I mean, I think we both did, and I think we're the ones that asked for it.
Yeah.
Can I speak? That was my understa, what I had in my mind, I guess, is I, I clearly thought it was to be on the CAC, and I thought it was gonna be a person, I think what Council Brooks is saying, not next, necessarily, someone that's really, there, we have a lot of people in this community that are, that's a real focus and concern of theirs, and they have a lot of expertise. Now, they might not have a degree in it, but they put a lot of effort and work in it, and that's their focus. So, like their role on that committee would be to look at it and say, are we thinking about this or that? We're, even though we have that concern, it might not be the first thing that comes to our mind. You know, and that would be more of their focus to bring to the table. Just like, like the Latino community's got a different focus, so we're just trying to get different perspectives in there to make the best choices.
I hear that, that's not what I under, understood, and, but that, that you guys' decision, absolutely. The question that Councilor Sacco raised is a good one of, like, is it a community member that has an interest? Or is it with, is it an organization that has that focus? It's like, what are you, what are you, what's in your brain about that?
I would think it's some, well, I'm thinking of a specific person, but I don't wanna call someone out, but, but like, Council Brooks said, if we have someone in our community that, like, River Keepers is a good example, that they're really invested into that, and they, you know, they've, yeah, just got that focus, or they understand our water systems and, or just the sustainability practices. So, they really have that higher level of knowledge to bring to the table.
I mean, not even higher level of knowledge, but just understanding of some of the touchpoints that we might not understand, because, like, we don't spend all of our time doing those kind of things. So, I'm not aware of everything, obviously, that's why we have community outreach. And so, I just thought somebody that with a specific lens might be helpful for diversifying our team.
Can I add something here? Just to, so I, I would consider myself to be that person in my professional career. I, I do speeches on sustainability and conservation, in fact, I'm doing one tomorrow. I'm doing one tomorrow. So I guess if there was not a person that I'm here as councilman to help in that process, to give you guys that lens, because I do this for a living daily. So I just want to throw my hat in there. If should we have, not having a person, or we're trying to carve out another, another position here, I'm available. Thank you.
So I think we definitely still want, on the Technical Committee, definitely want that person on. As far as CAC, I agree with Councilor Sacco, that I'm, what I'm getting spun about is, not to pick them off, but a representative of the Riverkeepers, are they acquainted in environmental design and building standards and stuff, other than just, you know, what's nice around a river and, you know, stuff like that? So how will we vet somebody who has the skill set and who's willing to volunteer their time to look at, like, look at the lens of, okay, here's the Cora. Yes, does, you know, building will have, the buildings and the design will have impact on the environment, but is, is that person going to have the expertise to help guide us in what we want to think about versus, you know, grabbing someone from the Riverkeepers or from different environmental volunteer organizations here? That's my quandary, is how do you vet the person that has the skills we're looking for? Is that where you were going, or?
I was just more just seeking clarification, as far as if it was just a community member. I feel like we have those folks currently. And, but I, I understand what Councilor Brooks and, and Councilor President Pratt are saying, as somebody, you know, with that more, more focus. I guess my, my only concern is that, I feel like, and, and maybe I misunderstood what the, what the ask was last time as well, as did it sound like our city manager. But we've seen the list. I think we've now added on twice. My concern is that next meeting, are we going to add one more person on and one more person on? And so I just want to also be cognizant of that as well, that we've had the opportunity to look at this list. And, you know, if we're, and to be a cohesive group, that I'm not sure that it makes sense to add on, you know, a lot more people. And I just don't want to start a precedence as well, to continue to add on more folks, more folks. But I absolutely understand. And I mean, because the environment is very important to me as well. I mean, I, I agree that that person, and if, I think if you have a specific person in mind, if it's okay to say their name, because I think we talked about people openly at meetings before, of who would be great, good to, to add on, perhaps if you guys feel comfortable saying who that person is, maybe we can talk about that person specifically.
I don't have a person in mind. I thought we were going to be discussing it. Everybody, like from the, we've got two members of the chamber, there's people that we've just done outreach to that, you know, they're not building experts. In my mind, you have people that are taking people up and down our river to help them appreciate the river. So that would be a resource, but it's a very lean organization, so I don't know if that would be a good fit. We have Marissa Hope, who's been a huge advocate for water for a very long time. And then I would defer to Nick, too, because he's worked with a lot of different people doing all the community outreach for the Climate Action Plan. And, and then there's also people that are in the, the business sector that are focused in green, but I don't think it would take, and another person I could think of is Terry Prek Rigsby, who does water council work and is also a watershed representative. So it's more about water, stormwater, flood management. I mean, we have, this book that I got today is an entire book just on building green cities, integrating urban flood risk management with green infrastructure. Who's doing that? You know, that's who I want to, I know the person that wrote this book. So I'm happy to talk about it. I don't have somebody in mind, but I didn't think I would have to do that. I thought we just had sat an environmental person and trusted that was going on.
Oh, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, Councilor, but I, I too was feeling a little bit more like what Councilor Sacco was saying. Do we want to add, I mean, committees are built so that there, there's not a, there's more of a focus. Sometimes when you add more to the committee, then it gets, gets a little bit confusing for, for the person that's actually leading the, the project. And I think that everything we do is from that lens, whether, if it's going to be a community member, because we already have that expert that we're gonna, that's going to be part of that technical, we have, right, that's going to be part of this, I'm assuming, that's, you were mentioning that. And then we're also, the council's lens on everything is with that environment in mind and conservation in mind. So I think maybe have, like, I think we, we thought of having maybe those voices that are going to, maybe, I thought we can have some voices, like, we can see some of the projects where like, okay, as a council that doesn't serve on the Cora Committee, but I still have a voice by seeing, maybe that's where we can have maybe another community member with, is that, is that what I'm, is that what I'm listening, or maybe I'm confused? I'm just trying to give a solution.
I'm just going to say, we've got communities around us all over the state that moved forward with development plans that didn't integrate the environmental community. And what happened was, it blew up. It blew up. People have lost their positions. People have been recalled from their city council. And it's happened last year. It's happened in King City. It's happened with Terry, with land use things. So there's just a lot of things where I think that people are sensitive, and it's a huge topic that people are very, very worried about. And it can be sort of a flashpoint thing, and I'd rather have those community members integrated into the conversation rather than putting out fires later. I mean, the other option for me, if it's too hard to integrate at this point, would be to, like, bring in good company, since we already work with them. So that would be a possibility since we're already contracted, and let them oversee. But I'd rather have a community member because I think that that would allow for a dispersment of any, like, concerns that happen. And I'm going to say, too, just for transparency for me, is the walk that we took yesterday was really helpful. I had concerns and had this sort of feeling of being left out, and it wasn't comfortable. I saw Council Reyes go with that, with making sure that Latino community was involved. I've seen other people that are involved, that are true advocates, which I appreciate. But that's, that's the kind of thing that I want to offset. I've gone through a lot of these different committee processes before. I never quite saw an appointment process like this last one we just did. And then I'm going to say that we, we never got this list to approve kind of thing. So the, the way that it's been going, it's been kind of different. And I haven't ever added people to committees afterwards. We've worked together for seven years, and that's not a thing I normally do. And I really don't feel like I am because I advocated for it when we first had the conversation. So I'm feeling like I'm doing my job. If people don't want the environmental community to be part of it, then you can stand with that decision, but that's not my inclination.
All right.
I'm sorry, I missed a little bit. I am not part of the committee, and I wanted to be part of that committee as well, but, you know, I settle for just being a voice on the sidelines. But that's what I settle for. But we do have businesses that will affect that community in that area, the Cora area. So I apologize if I made you feel alone or anything like that. But I too feel like I was alone at one point, and I settle for a stay, standing on sidelines, a kind of voice whenever I can, when I can. Thank you.
All right. So where, where are folks at in terms of adding an additional slot for someone with environmental lens, and then we'd have to recruit for it and get someone to agree to be on it? Where are folks at with that? Is that something you want to direct Sherlin and staff to add to the committee?
I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it, as long as, like, we did see the list, and now we know, and I understand that, that, yes, that there may have been some miscommunication, so I think that's fair. So I am in support.
Okay. Others? Yeah, no, you two are. So, Councilor Hillier?
I'm trying to find the list about, how many people do we have on the committee already? I know this was not what you were asking me, Mayor, and I apologize.
No, it's fine.
We have 13.
Well, I think we should add two people then, so you have an odd number. So I think we should appoint two people. I'm kidding. I'm just kidding. No, no. Like, I, like, so here's the thing. Like, if this is what we need to get this through, like, let's just do it. Like, I, I think this is a lot of conversation. It's important, I understand that, but let's put the person on there and move on.
Okay. Councilor Reyes, you okay with it?
Oh, yeah, I'm with Councilor.
You've got the majority. Let's do it. Add someone and then recruit? Add the position.
And we'll be seeking any input for potential, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Michelle, I think she'll get to present one.
Well, I was going to say, I wanted to weigh in on what you said, like, what would this person look like? So when you're focusing on downtown revitalization or putting these TIF funds into play, somebody with a green building background would be interesting, right? So how do you use mass timber? Somebody who is focused on transportation, walkability, and zoning and code, and how those things apply. So we talked a lot about single stair, right? So that's, that's an initiative that's happening right now that has a really big impact on being able to do quality infill. So those would be really valuable areas to recruit from within the community, people who have some expertise in those two areas.
All right.
Okay, I think we're jumping into my part now. So, super excited to be here, and I've met a bunch of you, but not all of you, so, so really great to be here. I had way too much coffee today, so I'm just going to warn you, I'm going to have to slow my, my speech down, so I don't blow through this too quickly. Sid wanted me to come here today and talk with you guys, give you an overview of what we're working on, some changes we made to the scope, and talk about my background just a little bit. So that's what I'm going to jump into first. So I am an urban strategist with a ton of experience working in urban renewal districts, and specifically thinking about how we're using those funds to improve what you have, incentivize what you want, and spending the smallest amounts of money, public money, possible, in order to create comparables that will incentivize the private sector to go do more of that thing. So that's what we're going to be focusing on when we're here. So to do this work, I work at the intersection of the three areas that are super critical to create successful mixed-use districts: business owner toolkits, property owner toolkits, and public sector toolkits. So we're going to be looking at these three areas. So the goal is to spread these funds around to these three groups so that everyone is executing at the highest level possible to have a successful mixed-use district. So my background is in the private sector, placing real dollars in these areas and successfully reshaping districts. And my consulting practice today is focused on working around the country in commercial and mixed-use districts of all sizes, on these kinds of interventions to improve economic performance. So that is my background. So now I want to talk a little bit about approach, and both kind of what we were thinking about originally with approach, and some of the changes we've made based on things that we've heard that I think reflect the conversation that you had just a little bit earlier today. So our original approach is roughly these steps that you see here. And we've already jumped into the first two, both with my time spent working on assessment and quantification, and also interacting with you guys with things like the walking tour and interviews with staff. But I want to dive into a couple of things on this list, in particular, the original list. So the first is, I like to listen in small groups. And at the very early stages of, of a project like this, the first groups that I like to listen to are small focus groups of property owners, business owners, and residents in the TIF district, and the surrounding properties around the commons, basically. And I want to do that because I need to understand the market. I need to know how the market is currently functioning today. You have to identify the strengths of that market, because the cheapest and easiest way to bring improvement and to catalyze development is to leverage things that are already working. And then we have to, of course, understand where the challenges are and where the weaknesses are, because that's where we want to backfill with TIF-based programs to make those things happen. So talking to the people who actually own property and businesses and live in this district, super, super critical as just a first past sort of outreach strategy. So next up, we're going to talk to people in larger groups. And this is where I want to listen and understand a little bit more about the community, what the community wants in a downtown, how it sees its own identity, and how that can be expressed in a city center. So to capture that, we're going to use a process I call civic identity, which uses this story framework that comes from the world of improvisation. So this is the core story framework, and this is what improvisers use to create compelling stories. And we're going to use it to better understand the story that Tuolatin is telling today, and the story that people wanted to tell in the future, particularly when it comes to downtown. So I want to talk about this list just briefly, and I'm going to talk first about these, these, these bottom three. So objective in this story framework as it applies to place is trying to understand what the city is passionate about, what it stands for, and what experience a downtown might provide. Relationship, we really want to understand who is relating and who isn't relating, and what they are relating to and what they are not relating to. And this gets back to your question of, you know, how do we engage people that aren't involved? Some of the way that we're going to get at that is asking people who relates right now and who doesn't, and what are they relating to and not relating to. So we're going to have, we're going to learn from this process who we really need to be reaching out to in new ways as well. We don't have to figure all of that out immediately. And then last up is environment. So when you're building a story, context is a really, really important part of story. And you can change the context, which will totally change the story. Here's the problem with place, is you can't change your context. It is what it is, and it is where it is. And so you have to think about how you're leveraging your context, which a lot of time people in places will complain about their context, but they don't think about how do we leverage our context. So we're going to be looking not just at your immediate context, which can involve being close to I-5 and the Tuolatin River. Interesting tension there, right? But also, it means your role in the Portland MSA, and then your role regionally within the state. These are all parts of your context, so we're going to be looking at that. And then last up is the first one on the list, which is characterization. And this is the physical expression of story. And anybody who went on the walk when we did the walking tour knows that in a downtown, the physical expression of story is literally what a downtown is. I mean, 85% of it is the physical expression of story. So we are going to be really looking at all of the ways in which downtown is and isn't successfully doing that, and how you need to make some changes to make that more effective. Super powerful to have this information in plain English, because at some point, you guys are going to be arguing over renderings, and zoning code, and road cross-sections. And you know what? When you're doing that, you go back to the plain English stuff, and you said, this is what people want to experience. This is how they want to feel. These are the climicals that people want. And so that's how it translates back. So it's really important to have some of this in sort of a plain English kind of way. So I want to share with you, and I've shared some of these before from other communities. This is from Miners Oaks, which is a working-class community in Southern California. It's kind of a suburb of Ojai, California. So the question is, is if Miners Oaks was a person, based on everything it presents to the world today, how is that person feeling? So in the surveys, I say that you can describe that person, because sometimes it's hard to think about how that person is feeling. So these are answers from the public survey. I'll let you read a few of these. So just from this one question, and looking at a few of these answers, you can tell a lot about this community, about the experience that their Main Street and their downtown is offering. you can tell a lot about this community, about the experience that their Main Street and their downtown is offering, about people's appetite for risk. There's a whole host of things that you can understand by thinking about a place through the lens of story. And then the last thing in the original scope that I wanted to just cover is there is a little bit of time in there for me to do some one-on-one work, either with your retailers or with some property owners. Um, and that is, you know, coming back to that toolkit of the improve what you have toolkit. Not everything in TIF is about how do we build some giant, brand-new thing. But it's like, how do we help what's there perform better? So, that is kind of the end of, of our original approach. So, now I want to talk about some of the additions that, that we added. And I had not realized that you guys were letting the TIF cook for a little bit and build up some increment before you started diving into your plans. And after we had the first CAC meeting, it was clear that there, there's just a huge appetite for outreach, right? You guys have been waiting for a few, I mean, everyone is like, okay, we're ready, let's go, we want to do this. So, totally get, there's a huge appetite for this. So, we wanted to build a little bit more into my part of the project. But again, I really want to stress that this is a two-year project, and there are going to be loads and loads of opportunity for people to engage. And one of our jobs is to look at, like, I mean, what is my process is, five months, four months? Um, so, so we're going to learn a lot from this group, and we're going to learn who else do we need to engage? And we're going to think about, you're going to be thinking about new ways to engage them. People particularly like the phase that comes after me, which is where you draw all the pretty pictures. That's, that's how you get a lot of people to engage, because when they can respond to a picture, um, they're, they're going to get way more excited. So, I just want to stress, there's going to be a lot of opportunity for outreach and, and, and to hit all of these people. But in addition to that, we are adding a couple of things. So, we added the walking tour, which we already did, and we had some planning commission, uh, chamber in aging, and then some city council there. And we are going to add two workshops for city council to really just talk about what your guys' goals are from a civic perspective. Um, so what's working, what's not, and what you define as success. And then we are also going to be expanding the small groups out just a little bit, so that we can look at, um, doing a more formal workshop with the CAC, engaging some high school students, some renters, the Latino community. Uh, particularly want to focus on also business owners and property owners that are in the, the TIF area as well, um, with the Latino community. So, this is some of the outreach that we have added to our initial first process. So, that is just a very quick overview of these things, but I just wanted to say that I'm basically going to be condensing what I find in terms of what your current story is, what people's aspirational idea of what the future story is going to be. We're going to mix that up with all of your, uh, real estate realities, of which there are many. I mean, one of which that I learned on the walking tour was that all of this is in a floodplain. So, we're going to have to really think about what is our, um, we, we sort of made the observation on the tour that when you go into an old industrial district that's been revitalized, there's a lot of elevated retail that's at the old dock high loading, you know? So, we're going to have to really up our, uh, sort of one-and-a-half-floor execution in this district as we think about new construction, for example. So, we're going to mix in those real estate realities, and we're going to think about how we leverage TIF to get from where you are to where you want to be, using real-world case studies. So, I'll be reporting out in the form of a presentation. The presentation's super important for the whole community that's involved, at least in my part. They do not read reports. So, one of the things to remember is that anybody who's a property owner or business owner is a brick-and-mortar person, and they want to see it and touch it and feel it and hear it, and they don't read reports. So, if you're going to engage that community, you've got to circle back with them in a way that they process. And then there will be a report, and you guys will have a chance to weigh in on that, um, before it's finalized. So, any questions?
Counselor Hillier?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for really recognizing that we need to meet people where they are. I really love the spirit in which you're going at this, and thank you.
Oh, great.
Counselor Brooks?
I want to thank you as well. Um, some of the things that you said, it just remind, I'm, I'm a social worker, so it's person and environment. It's talking to plain language, it's being approachable, and it's really assessing and diagnosing and then finding solutions. And then we're doing it for as little as we can.
Right.
With government help. Um, so, um, I guess my one question would be, what is the most, the thing that you're most challenged by, by this one? And the most excited by?
You have a really beautiful community physically, um, and there's a lot to tie into between, like, we talked about these edges of, um, like, the, the downtown commons area is, uh, pretty compelling in terms of a lot of the stuff that's on its edges. And I think there's a real opportunity for expansion of that idea of downtown. But I think tying in nature and your trail system and the river is, is pretty compelling, and a lot of communities don't have that opportunity. And, you know, I was there behind the LA Fitness, walking on the Greenway, and, you know, kind of checking all, it's a little weird right now, right? It's like, we got a little last mile problem, but I love that we have all that to tap into. Really, really fantastic. I think the biggest challenge is that your original commons area was created at a time of, uh, pretty massive parking minimums. So, what I have is this very inward-facing downtown that is surrounded by a sea of parking lots, and that's really rough, because I'll tell you, I have spent over 20 years working to get people into districts, and we're going to get people into businesses. The hardest thing we can do is get people to accomplish those two things. And it's really hard if the physical story from the outside of the commons is parking lot, because every time you drive by, you are never reminded of the experience that you have on the inside. And that is the number one way I get people to come into communities, is by telling that physical story. It's not a sign. So, that's probably the biggest challenge. Thank you so much.
Other questions?
Just a comment. Um, thank you for making it feel like, uh, there's a sense of things coming together in the end. So, um, I'm really enjoying the presentation.
Great.
All right. All right, you said?
I think that was it.
Okay.
Unless you want to add another person.
No.
How, how big do you consider small groups?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
So, that concludes the general business. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Have a motion and a second to adjourn the Development Commission meeting for May 27, 2025. All in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose, abstentions. Good night.